Well, it's nice to see you all here tonight. Evidently, there's not a football fan among the room. Hey, look, if I've gotta be here, you're gonna be here too. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll give scores out intermittently as the Patriots score each touchdown. Okay, let's see if they can turn it up a little bit. How about now, next? Is it better now? Okay. Good. Okay, before we start with Article One, I thought it would be worthwhile to have the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen introduce this table, so you will know who's sitting up here, and then I'll ask John Prandeville, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, to do the same thing at the far table.
Herman? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We'll go from my right to my left, and we'll start with the back, sitting in the back with the laptop punching in all the numbers and amendments, as the Assistant Finance Director, Tess Summers, Sharon Summers, and next to her, Assistant Town Manager, John Murray. And to my far right is the Moderator, Mr. McKenzie, Tom McKenzie. And sitting right immediately to his left is Town Clerk, Catherine Galpin. And to her left is our Town Council, Mike Callahan. And then we have Selectman Trey, or William Trey Schuber, Selectman Peter Ashton. Standing here is Selectman Dory Hunter, Selectman Wayne Fredericks, myself, and the Town Manager, Don Johnson.
John Prandeville?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Oh. On your right, my extreme left, Tom Mackey, Bob Miller, Tom Oldham, Jack Reitz, Red Ariba, and Sidney Johnson. And I'm John Prandeville. Thank you.
Okay. Let me start out with some instructions. How many of you are at a town meeting for the first time? Okay, good, good, great. Nice to see some new people here. Town meetings can be confusing, can be a confusing process. And I think it can be particularly confusing when you're in a location that is not as conducive to running an orderly, effective town meeting as the wonderful facility that we normally have, the high school auditorium. But the superintendent has assured you that this will be the last such town meeting that we need to have here, with our fingers crossed, because the new auditorium should be ready by the April Town Meeting. And I'm sure we'll all be glad to get back there. So we would hold this, yes, applause, did someone applaud? We will hold this facility for giant town meetings when we have thousands of people, as we have had in the past. So we may use it again, but hopefully you'll bear with us tonight. The sound is not as good here as it is normally. The visuals are not quite as good as they normally are. And we have people sitting in bleachers and milling about a bit. But we'll just do the best that we can. I have some instructions that I would like to give you now. Unless the debate becomes very confusing, we won't use pro and con microphones, because you may be moving from that side on the top road, or over here, or up here, or over there. So we will try it without pro and con microphones. But to balance the debate, I may ask for a pro speaker or a con speaker. It is also more difficult to see. We have two microphones on this side, two in the center, and two on the far side. That's six. And one up in the front that will be reserved for presentors. I say that again, one up in the front that will be reserved for presentors. And I may miss a single person standing up, because the background is, is not as good as it normally is. I do not want to admit that neither is my hearing or eyesight, as it good as it used to be, but it may be the case. So you'll have to bear with us a little bit. I would ask you, when you get up for the first or second time, perhaps the third time, you will introduce yourselves by giving your name and street. Please do that, so we know that you're a registered voter, but we also want to know who you are. If you wish to offer an amendment tonight to any article, please give it to me in writing. Unless it's a simple number change or a simple word change, I would like to see it. It may take me more time than usual to deal with an amendment, because this issue is complex and fraught with potential legal problems. We're not going to accept tonight, nor will there be one made, I believe, a motion for limiting debate. I think that's worked somewhat in the past, but this is a very serious and significant issue we're here to deal with, and I want to make sure everybody has a fair chance to say what they have to say. I will only limit debate, and I will do it on the moderator's authority if I think the debate is lagging or is going on too long. So I hope you'll trust my judgment for that, clear. I think because this is a complex issue, and you're dealing with complex motions, and you're dealing with a subject that can be highly charged to emotion, I would ask that we debate this in as strong a fashion as we want when we deal with ideas. You can be strongly in favor of something or strongly opposed to it, and that's fine. But you cannot. You cannot impugn the character of any board, any person, any citizen. If you do that, then I will ask you to cease your remarks and sit down. I will be fairly strict in this, because it is a little bit harder to deal with an audience in this room than it is in the auditorium. Civility in town meeting is a must. It is not an option. So with that admonition, I think we're about ready to begin. And we have two presentations to be made to put things in perspective for you prior to taking up Article One. The first presentation will be made by longtime Selectman Dory Hunter. Go right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the primary reason we're here is someone on this overhead, Public Health. We are here to debate sewers enacted. There is a long and varied history of that question. I will not dwell on it in any length. You pulled up colored sheets when you came in. Note the date, if you can see it on this slide. March 1966. It's as current now as it was then, with one exception, and that is, it speaks of secondary treatment. We've moved beyond that in sewers. We're now in primary treatment. That was a question that the town was asked in 1966, and the town passed over this question on that day and time to our Detrick. Our answer of the Study Committee, and this is another page out of that 1966 pamphlet, gives answers that are as cogent today as they were then. Even though the last one, which speaks about industry, we would speak about commercial development share of our taxpayers. The last four years, we have been bringing forward the Middle Fort Pond Brook Sewer District. You know I have stood before you twice before, in 1997 and 1998, with motions which were voted affirmatively to fund, to build that project. And each time, we have found through further engineering, development, and planning that the cost has grown. And therefore, we are back tonight after we have actually put the project in the main out to bid, and that will be discussed with you in detail. The Middle Fort Pond Brook Sewer District, you've seen these maps before. This is one of the district, and is shows in color septic systems, properties and septic systems that are older than 20 years and younger than 20 years. The red are the old. We are still the largest town in the Commonwealth. We have no public sewers. The 1966 effort was defeated, because I believe it was felt that not having sewers was a way to limit growth. We all know we've had the growth. This particular sewer district has very little additional property for growth in any events, so that argument is moot. You can read what happened in the '70s, '80s, and up till now. We remain the largest town in the Commonwealth with no municipal sewers. We have more than 6,000 septic systems. Ninety-one percent of the town's properties are served by a septic system. There are nine private treatment plants in town which serve the other nine percent, and vary widely from a large housing development, Nagog Woods, to individual commercial establishments like the nursing home. The Middle Fort Pond Brook Sewer District, which you will be voting on tonight on a go-no-go basis, would coincidentally serve, nine percent of the town, would serve 276 multifamily residences, 545 single-family residences, 63 commercial properties, 20 institutions, including schools, and 49 unbuildable properties under zoning. The district, as you know from our previous discussions, stretches from Adams Street, which is our sole site that we can use presently for disposal. We're not planning, again, to dispose in the river. This is an infiltration into the ground, a relatively new concept for a system of the size up to the schools, which, as you know, unlike in the '80s, when they did not join in the seoring effort, are now compelled to sewer, one way or the other. This is a public health initiative. We have had many studies. There are studies detailing the public health needs for this in 1967, '69, '73, '76, '83, 1984, 1985, 1988, 1995, and the several years leading up to this. I asked Doug Haley to pile up those studies that showed a public health need, and he said, "Gosh, they've gotten so big, we don't have them in volume anymore." These are those studies in microfiche, with 60 pages to a film. And if you know anything about microfiche, I am holding up a whole library at this point. Convenient, because you can't run up and read the page. The project has been evaluated by the Department of Environmental Protection, and I'm just going to run quickly through some criteria slides, so that you'll get an idea what some of the criteria are without dwelling on them in any length. And against all those criteria, the DEP has evaluated this project on the basis of complete mitigation of a problem, that it would implement a comprehensive wastewater management program, that it would bring us within full compliance with an enforcement order, and that would provide substantial rehabilitation, as noted in our master plan. All very important elements. But perhaps for our consideration, we can look at some more practical, at least more comprehensible data points. We have done, the Department of Health does stream samples four times a year at the locations shown on this map. Approximately 25% of those samples show coliform at a higher level than it is legal for people to swim. The Board of Health has granted 42 waivers in recent years for the properties indicated on the slide. Now, what is a waiver? You know, under Title V, the only time that your septic system is checked by somebody other than yourself in regard to whether it backs up or whatever, is when the property is going to be sold. There are 42 instances in the last few years where properties being sold did not pass and could not, within reasonable practicality in the immediate future, do so, and have a waiver waiting for the sewer. Now, many of those can be brought to Title V, but it didn't seem to be economically appropriate with sewers coming. Now, are there other than the 42 properties that don't meet Title V? I think the human probabilities are that there are some that are not up for sale that are in that category. That's one of the problems with sewer. Another, and certainly a very satisfying data point for us, which we'll talk about a little bit later, is we have gone through a very competitive competition, a very competitive process for state revolving fund loans against multiple criteria evaluation with many other competing projects and relatively little money, and have ranked very high after a little bobble in the draft order. Whereas, we were 17 in the draft, we're now ninth in the final, and are fully funded, and we'll discuss that in a little bit. There is going to be an extended discussion, I'm sure, about costs and benefits, with a lot of emphasis on costs, because the cost, the number of dollars that you can stack up, is a tangible thing that you can put on a spreadsheet. You can get some agreement or disagreement over the assumptions, and you can do mathematics. But I would suggest to you that there are many intangible benefits here in regard to public health. And they're very difficult to quantify, and some people who are very quantity-oriented say, "Well, you can't put a number to that, so it's not in the equation." Let me give you a little personal analogy. This is not a sales plug. I'm an attorney, and I do a lot of personal injury and wrongful death business. In prosecuting or defending a wrongful death case, if there's liability found and you get into damages, we bring in an economist, sometimes call him a bean counter, or Peter Ashton happens to be one, and they will take what your wages are, and they will project that out to the future. They'll discount it back, they'll take certain things out of that, and they'll eventually arrive at a statistically acceptable number as to what your life expectancy was, and what you would have earned, and what your widow or widower has lost in the way of income because you're not there. And I think we would probably all agree that that would not be the sum total, if you have to translate it into money, and unfortunately, that's all the law can do, that would not be the total loss to the widow or the widower of their spouse. There's a lot of intangibles there. And I, when I argue the case to jury for plaintiff, I always say, "Well, those are the dollars, but isn't it at least worth twice that?" Well, I would suggest, as you listen to the discussion, there are a lot of intangibles here. I'm being told that this is too basic. The microphone's not producing well, and it's probably in part because I have a cold. I'll try standing back a little bit, see if that helps. Another point that I would ask you to hold in mind as you listen to the discussions that follow is a septic system is not a sewer system. It can substitute for it, but it is not the same thing. It is, a septic system is a primary level of treatment that is unmonitored by any regulatory authority. A septic, a sewer system, on modern standards, is a highly developed tertiary system that is centrally operated and monitored. So one can be substituted for the other, perhaps, but they are not equivalent from an environmental point of view. Now, let me turn for a moment to the warrant, and help you a little bit with that. What we are going to do is we're going to move through the warrant. First article has to do with allocation of costs as to whether more costs will be moved on to the general tax rate that are felt to be beneficial to people outside the district. And I expect there'll be a substantial debate in regard to that. By the way, the Board of Selectmen has voted to recommend all the articles. Now, some of them, I'll tell you, are going to be contingent on others, but they all, if they are offered, will have a Board of Selectmen recommendation. The second article is in the nature of housekeeping. It's an old borrowing authority from 1988, we've never used, and we're suggesting that it should be rescinded, and we expect that will move very quickly. Article Three is the big enchilada. That's the no-go or go article. We have already borrowing authority for $21.5 million. We need $3 million and some more. We're going to undertake the project. We have bid contracts one and two, and done a takeoff from those bids for the expansion district to get a good cost. And that article will be presented, and you'll have an opportunity to vote it one way or the other. If Article Three is a go, then the next group of articles we will take is number four through 16 as a group, less number five. I'll get back to that. Those are eminent domain-taking authorities, if we need them. We're negotiating for the sites. For the pump station sites and the easements, for building the sewer system. The reason Article Five is an exception is it wasn't needed. That site was eliminated, so that would be a passover in any case. Continuing to assume that Article Three was a go, we have moved through the easements and the site takings. We would then move to Article 20, which is a petition for home rule to authorize a different way of constructing a sewer system should we need it in the future. It's called a design, build, operate, and that will be explained to you. And this just seems to us to make good sense. This question as to whether we should pursue this sort of a sewer building came up late in this process, and we couldn't do it because it requires special legislative authorization. It's not authorized under the general laws generally, and that will be explained. And then lastly, we would move to Article 21, the resolution about commercial sewer system. Now, let's go back to Article Three, and let's assume Article Three is a no-go. It's a negative vote. Then, clearly, we will skip over all of the easements and site takings, and we will go, after a motion to pass over that, to Article 17, which is a rather complicated concept, can be rather simply expressed as saying we will move to reduce the outstanding borrowing authorities, which is $21.5 million, to a sum sufficient to cover what the schools currently estimate to build the treatment plant on the school campus, which will then have to be built. And that estimate currently is $5.5 million. And an additional amount of money sufficient to cover the payment for the design funds that we have already expended, borrowed and expended for the design of the big project to get to tonight, which is another $2.4 million, or a total of $7.9 million. The idea being is that if you turn down the big project, we've got to do the other, and we ought to be consistent and have the same group of voters do it. Eighteen would then be the next article taken up, and that's more or less of a housekeeping sort of thing. If we're going to do a, we have to build a sewer system, a small package plant on the school campus. School campus is a patchwork of town and regional land, and the town would have to negotiate with the schools to acquire some of the regional land. And all probability, Don Johnson still got the $1 check in his desk drawer that the town got for the Blanchard Auditorium, and he would get it out of, out of his desk and give it back to ISA, and we'd square that away. And then, we would move on to, in a no-go situation, we would move on to Article 19, the Title V distressed properties. That has been discussed both as a no-go article and as an article in either event, but the Selectmen tonight voted to take it up only if we were in a no-go situation. And then, again, in the no-go, we would go on to Article 20 and Article 21. So that's the general flow. Let me turn then, in closing, to the SRF funding situation. As you know, the SRF loan funding support is critical to the project, and I'm sure you've all followed the perils of Pauline in that we only had half. It didn't look like we were going to get the other half, or at least there was substantial question. And as we were trying to come down to tonight with contract bids, we needed to know what that was. And the draft list came out. They were only funding the first eight, and we were number 17. And many of you were kind enough to assist us by communicating with your governor, your senator, your representative, when there was one, and Secretary Duran. And I'm happy to say that all those communications had some effect. I won't go into the, how we got into the problem. Suffice it to say that with considerable assistance of a lot of people, we have gotten out of it. And for that, we owe a debt of thanks to the governor and to Secretary Duran, Senator Reiser, Representative Atkins, who's here tonight, and to a gentleman who I'll introduce to you in a minute. The cry has always been, "We have to have the SRF funding, and we need to have it in writing." And we do. You probably can't read this. This is an SRF list, as we took it off the website today. And if your eyes are good, you'll find Act is number eight out of 17 that are being funded for $14.2 million. Almost misplaced the letter I need to read to you. This letter was received in hand tonight, dated November 15th, addressed to Herman Kabakoff as Chairman. Dear Mr. Kabakoff, The Department of Environmental Protection has issued the final calendar year 2000 Intended Use Plan, IUP, for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program. I am pleased to inform you that the project submitted by your community appears on the final IUP for $14.274 million. The funding provided in 2000 is an addition to the funds previously committed to this project and represents a commitment of SRF financing for the entire $24.7 million bid cost of your project. You are now in line to receive 0% interest financing from the Water Pollution Abatement Trust if certain deadlines are met, and you better believe they will be. The 2000 IUP supports a record $270 million in wastewater projects in 19 watersheds throughout the Commonwealth. Despite having $270 million to allocate, requests for funding far exceeded the available funding. Competition for funding was again intense, with the department having received 220 applications for projects valued at a total of $1.5 billion. Given that demand was more than five times the funding available, it is no surprise that many worthy projects could not be funded. I thank you for your interest in the SRF program and look forward to working with your community in the future. Signed, Andrew Gottlieb, Director, Division of Municipal Services. Mr. Gottlieb is here tonight, and I'd like you to give me a round of applause. Mr. Gottlieb has been most helpful in our struggles with this project, not just in SRF funding recently, but in many other matters. And ISA, I would say, the quintessimal state servant. He is absolutely the antithesis of the stereotype of the bumbling, fumbling, rule-bound bureaucrat. Andrew tries to make it happen the way it should happen, and he goes the extra mile. And we asked him to come tonight. He came bearing the writings that we were asking for. And I've asked the moderator if we could ask if there are any questions about the SRF. This is the man who knows all the answers. And if there are any, I would then ask the moderator to ask the meeting for permission to, Mr. Gottlieb, to speak to answer the questions. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Prandeville, I believe you have a presentation to make as well. I think Mr. Prandeville is next. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. John was the head of engineering at New England Town for years.
I'm scared by these on and off buttons. Good evening. My chore tonight is to present, as a member of the Sewer Action Committee, what we define as the capital effects of the Middle Fort Pond Sewer Project, Sewer
as the capital effects of the Middle Fort Pond Sewer Project, Sewer District. We are not going to compare it to any plans on a continuative basis that might have said, what would you do if you regraded, upgraded, or repaired extant systems? That study was not done. So all I'm presenting is the sewerage part of the cost. What I'm going to do is step reasonably fast through a series of premises that were used for the design, engineering, and now would be implemented in construction. And I'm going to take a moment just to put each one up. The sewer system's capacity is listed at 250,000 gallons per day. That's determined by the DEP because we are putting our effluent not into the river, but into the ground. The average daily flow is estimated to be 268,000 gallons per day. That's the design. The DEP allowed Wooded and Current, the engineering firm that did this work, the construction work, or the design work, the ability to design to that particular capacity. The cost of the project, as it sits today, based on two bid contracts and a piece of a contract for the expanded district, based on cost estimated from these contracts, at $25,113,000 and some change. That's the cost of the project as estimated today. That money, the $25,113,000, will be obtained by fees from bediments and/or fees from the general taxpayers. That's what the slide reads. Or revenue sources that will be over a combination, could be over a combination of 20 and 30 years. Some of the loans will be 20 years. Others could be, for the SRF funding, 30 years. And what we used for the project, what was used to allocate the bediments, was a uniform flow method, one of three methods that is permitted, and this seems to be the fairest method of allocating costs among the several competing, or the abuddhas. This is the one slide I noticed I had made an error on it because there was a change on Saturday night, and I had to make some adjustments. The governmental entities now, only the town is included in this particular, will reimburse their half a percent of the bediment charges, $99,000 of this $25 million. We, as general taxpayers, will pay that through our, through a tax base, as it's currently I'm not going to speak to the administrative and the O&M costs in depth. I think others will speak to it later. But I just put this up to remind you, we are not covering this in our presentation tonight, but the estimates of the admin, the O&M costs, are currently, for the operation of this project, estimated to be between $571,000 and $609,000. And they will be recovered by user charges, people who use the sewerage system. The annual residence charges that we've computed, this would be for a single-family residence, three-bedroom, we'd say, will range from $435 to $537 a year. They are based on water usage or will be based. These are estimates. These are not, these will only be available when the sewer district is formed and people sit down and put together a cash flow analysis that will be able to put out a bill for usage. The cash flow analysis that I refer to, when it's done, will be based, can be based, on recovering in the initial year from estimated bediment charges up to 50% of the annual bediment charge. It was a 30-year bediment or a 20-year bediment, however it's calculated. 50% of an annual effect can be recovered in advance because any sewer district that has to be started has got to have some cash flow to come into it, to get it off the dime. Now let me go to looking at this problem as a capital investment, and this could be done by a business, and obviously has been done by the Sewer Action Committee. You've seen some slides. This is just another slide to remind you of what has to be designed. Down in the lowest part of the chart is where the, on Adam Street, is where the wastewater treatment facility will be. It's going to wind its way down Adam Street, then up high, take a hard right on Parker, continue on Parker to River Road, take a left on River Road, get to Route 27, and then up 27 to Kelly's Corner with a branch off before that up Prospect Street. So the pipe is long and narrow, and it's designed to capture enough effluent to produce, or to reflect the capacity of 250,000 that is designed into the treatment facility. I thought you would be interested to see how the bediment units present themselves across the different categories of users: institutional, commercial, municipal, residential, and multifamily. If you put the, these are the bediment units. There are 1,540 bediment units in this district. Excluded now are the bediment units that would have been assigned to the schools because, based on the amount of money that we have for an estimate for a treatment plant for the schools at $5.5 million, we withdrew that from the calculation of bediment units, and you'll see why in a minute, because it can't be part of it. It's allocated in a different fashion. But taking the remainder and dividing it into the amounts of money, I'm sorry, they then distribute, distribute, the bediment units distribute themselves this way. One point, if you take the multifamily and the residential together, they represent 67% of the bediment units, and the commercial have 23%. The municipal is left with 7.7, and the institutional at about, I can't read my, yeah, 40 bediment units, but I don't have a percentage now. It's about 2%. So that's the way, think of that as a, the way of looking as an input into the design Now for a not-too-complicated look at the cost situation. A year ago, a little over a year ago, we presented the rationale for a $21.5 million sewerage treatment facility. It sits right in the middle, 1098. It was at a town meeting. Before that, there was a price of $11.5 million in the April town meeting. The differences between those two numbers, roughly $10 million, we explained last year. But just to refresh your minds, 3 million of the 10 is attributed to the fact that an expanded district was added for the town meeting in October a year ago. The rest of it came because the $11.5 million was on a, based on a design that was, from an engineering point of view, I'd call a desktop design. It wasn't based on any detailed design in the field. And when the Wooded and Current people started into the design phase, as of that point in time, it looked like, or it did, the wastewater treatment facility and the collection system by themselves had gone up $4 million. A lot of the wastewater treatment, if not all, was attributable to more stringent requirements for the treatment of the effluent at the facility. There was also an additional amount for engineering that wasn't reflected in the 497 figure. That was what I would call a desktop engineering design. At the 1098 point, we had a fair look at what the district was going to cost, $21.5 million. Tonight, we're sitting at $25,133,000. That's up 3.6 million from a, from a little over a year, well, a little, yeah, a little more than a year ago. The wastewater treatment facility and the collection system, due to increased design requirements, because in 1098, the design was not fully completed. When it was completed about January of this year, the wastewater and collection systems had gone up, at that point, about $2 million. The engineering costs had gone up 1.2 million, and other items adding to over $300,000 can be attributable to such things as the archaeological work that has to be done, police details that were not included in the past, the peer reviews, et cetera. We have a list of all these items, and I'm not just going to, if anybody is interested later, I can show you the details that add up to the differentials between these two amounts of funds. Needless to say, as we sit here, or stand here tonight, the cost we're looking at is $25,133,000, contract engineering costs. That amount of money, if you take the $25,133,000 and again apportion it around the institutions or the various categories, commercial at all, let me start with the schools. I mentioned earlier that I had taken the bediment units out of the calculation. The school's estimate is now $5.5 million for a system, a wastewater treatment facility system, that would be constructed on the school property if the sewerage system was not constructed. It is defined as an avoidable cost. The number first became available to us, quite frankly, to me, on Saturday night. When it's defined as an avoidable cost under a bylaw, which we all passed in October of 98, it is assigned to the public in general, other words, the general taxpayers. The selectmen under that section of the bylaws of the town assign it. So that $5.5 million is treated as an avoidable cost, and is therefore out of the amount of money that would be used to allocate bediments to the non-school institutions, businesses, et cetera. The result is the commercial properties in aggregate would be assessed at the present writing, 8.6 million. The municipal I referred to earlier, $99,000, that's a couple of town buildings. The residential properties, 7.7, multifamily, 2.7, institutionals, and you can read that as the churches, the synagogues, the Discovery Museum, et cetera, if there's any other thing to be fit in the, et cetera. The aggregate is $25,133. Now, the bediment charge that flows from that, I mentioned earlier, no pun intended, it's roughly $12,743. Prior to the amounts of money being taken out for the schools on an avoidable cost basis, 5.5 million, I got to be careful, I'm an engineer by training, not an economist, that number would have been 14,000 plus. So the people in the district have seen their bediment charge go down by the, if this avoidable cost is transferred to the town for the bylaw. Now we'll look at the effects under two scenarios. The total cost of the project, you can see in the dark charts, and there are each one, there are two bars in each one, one over the 30-year SRF funding and one over the 20-year SRF funding. The total of the project cost is $25,133,000 in either case. If it is a 30-year debt, based on the amortization schedules from the Wastewater Management Trust that John Murray has obtained and that we used for this calculation, by the way, there's a suppressed zero for those who worry about that, in order to make the chart show up, there is a suppressed zero there. The difference between, in the 30-year, one would repay, over the 30 years, $27,100,000. With the 20-year amortization schedule, the current amortization schedule is a, has a negative interest effect. We pay back 89 cents on the dollar. Therefore, instead of paying back over 20 years, $25,133, we pay back $24,156. And that is, that is reflected in the annual assessments that would be charged per bediment unit. In the case of a 20-year, it would be $613. You pay more for the short term than $458 for the 30-year. So if you look at it from a credit card point of view, that might be an attractive buy. On the other hand, it is a zero-interest loan, and one has to, in our opinion, that, this is an opinion, consider that. Now let me turn and finish the presentation with some looks at something that has to be done in order to get the process, assuming that there's a go tonight, to get the process to go from the financial point of view. And I have some draft cash flow premises that I'd like to share with you because they treat how this project should be managed right after and if you vote for the project tonight. One, I mentioned earlier, the 2000-year estimate of bediment payments would include in it a 50% estimated payment for the first year of whichever amortization schedule is taken, and then the charges would be estimated from then on. Two, a hookup rate will have to be used, and it will be based at this writing on a Wooded and Current analysis of voluntary connections to the sewerage system over a period of, I think, 15 to 16 years. It does not reach 100%. There is not mandated hookup. In the way this loan works, when John Murray sends a bond in, we of the town are obligated to pay back that bond, but there's only one payee. That's the Wastewater Management Trust. We get money as we spend it on a dollar-for-dollar basis. There is, this is not a bond where you get it issued and you can invest it. You get, you get the money as we get the bills and pay them. I mentioned earlier that this fund will produce an SRF loan that will total $24,900,000. It's different than, because it already includes a $1 million loan that we have received for design purposes from the SRF, and a remaining $23.8 million for the eligible costs of the project. Not all the costs in the $25,113 are eligible for the SRF funding. They have some rather stringent guidelines. Most of it is, but not all. In the cash flow analysis, an assumption's going to have to be made about the inflation. Usage charges will be based on the Wooded and Current analysis or any subsequent analysis, but this has to be done, and inflation will have to be taken into account in the derivation of the future O&M charges. And it's a zero-sums game in all of this. Any one set of either uses or abuddhas gets a lower bediment charge, somebody else pays. There's no magic way. We have to end up paying back the $25 million plus its interest or minus its interest, as the case may be, but it's a zero-sums game. And this has to be run, and I assume will be run, as a sewer enterprise or a sewer district, and a positive cash flow is required. This will be run, this will be run like a small business. It has to have the money to pay its bills, and it has to have the money to repair its plant and its facilities as time goes on. And what remains to be done in the capital piece of this, and therefore by extension also the O&M piece, is assuming that this project is voted in an up condition, a cash flow analysis has got to be done like the day after tomorrow, if tomorrow is the day, or the day after today, if today is the day. One final caveat, the $25 million in any SRF loan is not a grant. It's not free money. It is a loan that has to be repaid either above the $25 million for the 30 years or below in the case of the 20 years, but it is not a grant. Don't want anybody to think that Mr. Gottlieb brought some cash with us and we never have to give it back. That goes back into the Wastewater Management Trust so they can fund other projects. Thank you.
I just have a brief announcement to make. There's some good news here tonight. Somebody in this audience owns a Ford pickup truck, Mazda 550 YNA. I'm happy to report that your headlights are working fine. You may wish to go and turn them out, though, so they'll be working fine when you leave. If no one gets up and walks out, I know who owns this car, but I hesitate to mention her name. Ford pickup Mazda 550 YNA. Ford pickup Mazda 550 YNA. Okay, let's now move to Article 1, and I will read the motion under Article 1. Mr. Schubert moves to amend Chapter D10 of the town bylaws by adding the following language at the end of said section 1. (Expletive) Except that costs incurred in connection with the planning and construction of the sewer collection and treatment facility for Middle Fort Pon Brook Sewer District for archaeological studies, paving of roads, peer reviews, police details, traffic studies, and land acquisition amounting in total to $1,336,600 shall be allocated to taxpayers at large and except for such costs as the town meeting by a two-thirds vote at a town meeting subsequent to this November 15, 1999 special town meeting shall allocate to taxpayers at large. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The move in second. Mr. Schubert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm a little hoarse tonight. Please bear with me while I sit down. Article 1 is somewhat complicated. I want to try to make it a little simpler. The current bylaw under Section D10 provides for 100% user funding. It provides for expansion costs which have already been designed into the system to be paid by future users of the system. It also provides in Section 4 of that bylaw to enable the avoided costs of construction of a sewer system on public lands to be assessed to the town at large. And I'll go into that in a minute. The current bylaw also provides right now for a majority vote for any changes to the bylaw. The proposed changes, there are essentially two. The Sewer Action Committee has recommended the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen recommends to this town by majority vote that we assess an additional $1.3 million of construction costs to the general tax population. And I'll go into that slide in a minute. The other thing that this bylaw is proposing, the changes to this bylaw, is that it requires a two-thirds vote at future town meetings. Let me explain the two-thirds vote first. In Article 3, which you'll hear in a little while, we must have a two-thirds vote to proceed because we're voting to appropriate funds. The Sewer Action Committee and the Board of Selectmen went through a number of discussions on majority votes versus two-thirds votes. And we decided that to be consistent in future town meetings for additional changes, that we change this bylaw to a two-thirds vote. So that any time that you're talking about sewers and funding, you've got a two-thirds vote to change anything. There will no doubt be much discussion on our recommendation for picking up some additional public benefits. I want to go through those with you. Basically, since last October, or October of 1998, there have been some added costs to this project. Make no mistake, this is an expensive project. It's expensive for the town, it's expensive for the district owners. The Sewer Action Committee has heard over and over again from many of the residents and many of the district owners that they support the project, that generally people feel we need this. But the district owners have said, "It doesn't feel right." It feels that if there are all these public benefits, then why can't we have a community? And why can't the community share in those public benefits? There has been much debate and much discussion about this. On the Sewer Action Task Force, a lot of research was done in terms of trying to pull out of that $25 million price tag some costs that we could quantify. One of the original proposals was to change the percentage from 100% user funding to 50% user funding to 75% user funding, essentially increasing the town's portion, the general population's portion of funding the project. That didn't feel right. But yet we did know that there were additional costs that we could quantify that will benefit the public at large. Those costs are the archaeological dig that we did, which was required by the Mass Historical Commission. The cost of that was $209,000. And the town at large benefits from that. There is a video that has been prepared that will be available for schools to show what that site was used. We have discovered human habitation on that site going back 7,000 years. There was some debate as to whether it was a sewage treatment plant, but we haven't come to any conclusion on that. Land acquisition. We have budgeted $120,000 for land acquisition. We probably will not need all of this amount. But if you take land, the land goes into municipal use, it becomes public land, and there is a general benefit to the town. Paving of roads, self-explanatory. One of the things that the town has done over the past couple of years is that it hasn't followed through on its regular maintenance of roads in South Acton or Kelly's Corner, primarily because the issue of sewers. We knew if this vote passed, we would be eventually digging up the roads. So we paved other roads in other parts of the town. And you essentially lose that Chapter 90 money, the Chapter 90 assistance. So we included that as part of the public costs. Peer reviews, a lot of discussion on the engineering design. Is it feasible? Will it work? You've heard that the costs have gone up. The Sewer Action Committee made a decision to fund a peer review at a cost of $19,000 to find out if there were any fatal flaws in the design. The good news is, the peer reviews by Camp Dresser McGee, which is a world-renowned engineering firm, found no fatal flaws. As a matter of fact, came back with very, very few suggestive changes. Police details, while you're constructing the collector's system, which is the pipes in the ground, there will be a cost to control traffic and we're going to have to pay the police extra details to control traffic. And finally, we had to do a traffic study to figure out how we were going to do the traffic control, what roads would be done first, and how we would get the whole collection system in place while minimizing the impact to traffic. Those are the changes. We understand that we are asking the town to pick up approximately $1.3 million of extra costs of this project. There are some who have said, "This is too much, it's too expensive a project, I don't support it." You see at the bottom of that the annual impact to your tax bill. If you go a 20 years of financing, the cost is less than $10 to an average $300,000 house. If you go with 30-year financing, it's about $7 that the average taxpayer would pick up. I urge you to vote yes on Article 1 to these changes. Sewers are important to our community. This is an important step to tell our neighbors in the district that we do care about sewers, that we do support the project, and we do recognize the public benefit at large. Thank you.
Before we open this up to a general debate, I would like to introduce our new state representative who is here with us tonight, as Delray Hunter has already said, Representative Cory Atkins, if you will stand up and the people can see him. Welcome to the town of Concord, I believe, where we separated from that town from years ago, is that correct? Well, represent us well, you started off well. Thank you. I will now open it up to one more presentation, and that will be done by Steve Probst, who's worked on this project for some time and I think you'll be interested in what he has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Steve Probst. I live on Putter Drive, which is in the expanded district. So it was not in the district when we originally voted, and then the last time we voted it went into the district. I make my living as a management consultant, I've been doing that for about 19 years. And one of the things I do is help companies make decisions about how to spend money and whether to spend money. I found after the last time we voted, when the number was around $21.5 million, I was very uncomfortable trying to decide how to vote. I'd heard all these numbers and all these benefits and I couldn't put it all together. So I decided to basically sit down for my own benefit, do a cost-benefit analysis. I've done that, I've run it by a ton of people in town, the Sewer Action Committee, the Finance Committee, other groups, people in favor of sewers, people against. I'd like to do, share that with you tonight, try to put it all in context. Okay, this first chart tries to show the total costs and benefits of the sewer project. When I say total, I'm leaving out one chunk. There are homes that are beneficiaries and pay some costs. There's the town for the schools, there's other institutions, churches, synagogue, preschools, and so on. The last group is commercial. Commercial, we have no information on whatsoever in terms of the benefits, what their alternative costs are and so on. Those numbers left out of all of these charts, both the cost side and the benefit side. What you see when you look at this, the left-hand bar is the benefits. The red in both bars is residences, the green is the towns, mostly schools. The left bar says the first benefit is, if I live in the district, I won't have to replace my septic system ever again if I connect. So I avoid spending that. So this is looking at the alternatives, and there's a certain amount we save there. There's a little blue bar in the middle, that's the same thing for the institutions in the district other than the schools. The last chunk is the schools piece, and that schools piece is fairly big. You heard about $5.5 million a few minutes ago that would cost to put in a plant just for the schools, that would not be able to serve anything else. On top of that, operating that plant would cost somewhat more than connecting to the sewer system and using the sewer, operating and maintenance costs. When you add up all those costs, all of which are financial, all of us are going to be paid if we don't get the sewers, it comes out to $17.9 million. On top of that, not counted, you heard Delray refer before to some public benefits. There's public health benefits in the sense, our Assavet Town Well is in the district. So presumably that water will be cleaner if we have a sewer system. If Kelly's Corner can expand, we'll get more commercial tax benefits, those revenues accrue to the town as a whole because if we have those monies, we need to tax the residents less to have the same total budget. In addition, there are some homes in the district that don't have an easy septic solution. They're on ledge, it doesn't perk, they don't have the space. For whatever reason, it may not be practical to put in a regular septic system. We don't know how many of those there are, we don't know how much those alternatives cost, but it's believed that they're very expensive. All those numbers are left out of the benefits. You'll have to draw your own conclusions to how big they are. I just don't know. That's the benefit side. On the cost side, there's really three kinds of costs. This is $25 million construction cost you've already heard about. On top of that, everybody in the district has to pay a connection cost if they want to hook up. The number in here is about $3,000 per home. The final piece is operating and maintenance. Someone who lives in the district, if they hook up, is going to spend about $500 a year more for operations and maintenance than it would for septic. It's about $600 a year for O&amp;M on the sewers. It's about $200 bucks once every two years to pump a septic system. You put all those chunks together, your costs come out to about $18 million. I didn't plan it this way, in fact, I was pretty surprised. The numbers come out as about a wash before you add in the public benefits. It says, "If we distribute the costs fairly, the town is probably better off with sewers if you put any value at all on those unknown benefits." They're at the top of the left-hand bar. So that's the first piece. The second thing to notice, the next slide will elaborate on it more, is that the green bar, the upper chunk of the bars, is larger on benefits here than on costs, that's the schools. The red bars, the residences, are larger on the right-hand bar, the costs, than on the left. That's the people who live in the district. So even though for the town as a whole it washes out, the town as a whole is getting more benefits, the people in the district are getting more costs, the way it's now proposed. This takes those bars and just turns them into pies. It's easier to see the proportions. The upper chart is the benefits, and it says that residents get about half the benefits. There's a chunk there for problem homes, that's these septic systems we don't know what to do about. You can read into that any other public benefits as well. The number here is the net present value of about $2.5 million. It seems reasonable, it may be conservative. But what shows on the cost side is the residents are paying about 3/4 of the costs, as it's now proposed. And the big reason for that is those operating and maintenance costs rather than capital costs. By the way, all the numbers you're seeing here, unless I explain otherwise, are what are called net present values. Net present value is simply a way of summarizing a bunch of annual payments that may be different in different years and rolling it into a single number. It's the standard way of doing these kinds of comparisons. Those are all aggregate numbers. I want to talk a little about what it means for people who live in the district and then a little bit for people who live outside the district. What are we talking about? If you live in the district, over a 20-year period, the net present value is that you will spend about $2,200 more for sewers than you would for septic. There are all sorts of complicated factors here. There are tax credits that are available if your system has failed, and there are timing issues and so on. The assumptions here have all been reviewed with the town administration and Sewer Action Committee. But it basically says that the killer here is the operating cost of the sewer system. The other thing that's interesting is you notice the betterment cost shows up at $8,600. John mentioned that the actual betterment's a bit over $12,000. The difference is, we have this interest-free loan. And if I am paying back... And if I am paying back $12,000 over 20 years with no interest, that's actually worth -- the payments don't really add up to $12,000. The net value of that is considerably less. And that's why that's only $8,600 there. Whereas the left-hand side, replacing the septic system, you do have to define the assumption here is you are financing it, probably with a home equity loan. There are some numbers at the bottom of the chart in terms of what this means dollars per year. If you live in the district now and you keep septic, you're going to spend about $1,000 a year for your system. And $1,000 is about 100 years for pumping. The remaining $900 is a spread-out cost of what it would cost to replace it at a typical cost of somewhere around $17,000, all told. On the other hand, if you put in sewers, it's going to be about $1,300 a year. The betterment's a little under $600, about $580 a year that you pay each year. Your operating and maintenance charge is about the same. There's some tax effects that reduce it. You do have to pay to hook it up. And you're going to pay, if you live in the district, you still live in the town, you're paying that share as well. So it's about $300 a year difference. As an individual, it's going to depend, though, on what your specific home's cost is. If you live in a neighborhood, I'll use mine as an example, where a septic system is very cheap. The ground perks really well. Then your septic option is much less expensive. That means by comparison, your sewer option is more expensive. The gap is bigger. If you live in an area where you have a very expensive septic system to replace, let's say it's a small piece of land on ledge, it could be considerably more. What this shows is that for a typical cost of a septic system, it's $3,000 to $5,000 more expensive to have sewers, or $2,000 to $5,000, sorry. The break-even is about a $19,000 cost for a septic system. If it's $19,000 and you live in the district, you come out ahead if it's at least that much. One last point if you live in the district. Legally, it is not a mandated hookup. You can pay your betterment of $12,000 and never hook up and keep your septic system. The problem is practically that doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense for two reasons. The first reason is there's a tax credit. It's a tax credit of 40%. If you hook up when the sewers first come by, you get to take the tax credit on everything, the betterment plus the connection. If you hook up later, you don't get to take it on the betterment, only on the connection. Difference is about $4,800 of tax credit on your Massachusetts income tax, spread over four years. That difference is so big that would take 10 years of savings by not being hooked up, because your operating and maintenance costs are lower, to make up for it. So if you're going to hook up in 10 years, you might as well hook up on year one. The kicker is you're probably going to hook up in 10 years because you'll need a Title V waiver to upgrade or improve your septic system if sewers are in the street in front of you, if you can hook up. So it basically says your septic system's going to fail sometime. When it fails, you're going to have to hook up. If you're going to hook up eventually, you might as well do it when you can get the tax credit. So unless your septic system is very new and not expect it to fail for a long time, you're probably better off hooking up immediately. That's for the district. If you live outside the district, what is a cost? The current numbers, as of 4:30 this afternoon, are -- It's been a busy afternoon. The school superintendent just came out with numbers that say it would cost about $5.5 million of construction cost to put a plant in on the school complex that could handle only the schools. That could handle only the schools is an engineering restriction. It's just, that's the capacity. And part of that is for the plant, and part of it is the leach fields will be raised, and it ruins the soccer field, so you have to spend money to fix that. In addition, there'll be operating costs that'll be higher than for sewers. The total cost, assuming that we financed it with a normal bond, this wouldn't be an interest-free loan, is going to be a bit over $500,000 a year. So the really bad news here is if you vote against sewers as a town, if we vote against sewers, we will see an average tax bill of about $92 increase. So the choice is not between spending money and not spending money. The choice is between how we spend money. The other thing that's interesting is what's the break-even? How much money can the town pick up before it costs us more than just doing the schools? And the answer is about $10 million of construction costs. And the reason it's $10 million is the real question is how do the annual payments balance out? And if you have an interest-free loan, the annual payments are a lot lower than if you're paying interest. We could put $10 million total of the $25 million construction cost on the town and be break-even for people who live outside the district between doing the schools. I'm not saying $10 million's the right number, simply saying it could go as high as that. The numbers, by the way, in Article 1 are considerably less. The numbers in Article 1 are $5.5 million for the school capital cost. I believe there's another $1 million, which is the expansion, added expansion cost to the system. The pipe is larger. Is a million the right number? Okay. That's $6.5 million. And the article here proposes raising that by another $1.3 million to $7.8. So we've got still $2 million more of room to still come out ahead for people who don't live in the district. So what's it all mean? It means if we disregard all the public health benefits, and I'm not saying we should, but even if we disregarded them, sewers are not a bad decision for the town. It's not too expensive. It's very expensive. It's not too expensive. Second is if you live outside the district, as long as the town doesn't absorb more than $10 million of capital, you come out ahead. Third is that almost no matter what we do, the people in the district on average will end up spending a little more. And that may be reasonable, may not. Depends on your attitude. Depends on your own specific septic system. And part of that is every dollar the town kicks in doesn't go to the residents in the district. It reduces the total cost, which is also covered by the commercial entities, which are, and they're about the same size as the town in terms of betterment dollars. And the last piece is just a reminder, it doesn't include the public numbers here. If you believe, for example, that the tax benefits from commercial taxes and the public health benefits from a cleaner acid bit well and so on are worth some money, the town could pay even more than that and still come out ahead. All right. Thank you.
I will recognize Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The presentation you just heard by Mr. Probst is an example of interested citizen who has followed this process and attended many of our meetings. There are a number of other citizens that have. There were many people who have joined in helping the Sewer Action Committee and its task force over the last four and a half years to bring us till tonight. The problem with recognizing individuals is you always miss some people who should be recognized. And so if I've missed anybody who ended up in the final team, please excuse me. But I would ask whether you're for this or against this, that you recognize extraordinary volunteer efforts of the following people in no particular order, except the way I wrote them down. Trey Schubert, and I'd ask these people to stand. Nancy Tavernier, Art Gardner, Ann Chang, John Prendeville, Mike Scanlon, Jim Demming, Mike Conneby, Andy McGee, Bob Johnson, and Pat Holm. All of these were members of the Sewer Action Steering Committee. There were many other task force members and earlier members of the steering committee. And also, we've had extraordinary support from the whole town staff, but most particularly from Don Johnson, John Murray, and Doug Haley. And I'd ask them also to stand up, and if the moderator would allow it, as for a round of applause.
All right, and now Article 1 is open for general discussion among the town meeting members. I'll recognize first Mr. Cadillac.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Even before I get to the microphone, I could have been going out the hall.
I know you're getting older, Charlie, but it's still early.
I'm Charlie Cadillac. I live on Paul Revere Road, in case you don't know. Couple of points which I think may interest all of you, and then I will give you my opinion on how I think we should vote on Article 1. Point number one, that any cost that's shifted from the users of the district, as you heard, to the general tax base will have to come out of somebody's operating budget. Municipal schools doesn't really matter, but out of somebody's budget. Right now, even without this article passing, as now proposed, and I'll come back to some of these numbers, we're talking about $6.5 million out of the $25 million total cost. That's $5.5 million, this supposed avoided cost for the schools, and a million for the expanded district, expanded capability amount to be paid from the general tax base. That's $6.5 million. Let's just say for easy, quick numbers, that we end up with a 20-year bond. That's $325,000 a year, interest-free, that has to come out of somebody's budget. I haven't heard anybody propose an override. Still not hear anybody proposing an override. So just keep in mind that if we spend $325,000 for capital costs, we haven't got to the operating ones, some light item in somebody's budget will have to be decreased. If we shift more money, as proposed under this article, to the general tax base, you can do the numbers, $1.3 million adds another, you know, $70,000 a year, and so on. And there may be amendments from the floor to do more. That's a simple fact. It's not my opinion. Just do the calculation. The second point, which I think everyone, particularly the people in the district, should keep in mind, that there are really two decisions that will be made at this town meeting. One is whether or not to go ahead with a project that's under Article 3, two major decisions, I should say. And the second, which is this article, is how to allocate the costs. Now, if Article 3 passes, it's pretty clear that the contract will be signed, and the backhoe will show up, and we'll start digging, and the project will be underway. So that's a fairly permanent decision. However, the second decision, how to allocate the costs, which is this article, is not a permanent decision. Because the final betterments, the liens on the houses and so on, will not be established and set in place until the project is completed, which may be two years from now or longer. In the interim, any town meeting, if it has the appropriate article, which is not hard to put on, can change the rules as to who pays what. As last October, the special town meeting changed the rules, which is why we are now looking at this $5.5 million school cost. So keep in mind that if you are going to base your decision on Article 3 on what you think the cost may be to either the people in the district or out of the district, doesn't matter, based on decisions meant tonight, a simple majority can always change the town bylaw, which is what governs how these costs are allocated. So again, any interim town meeting between now and when the project is completed can change the rules. I think that's worth pointing out. Somewhat as an aside, it is also clear that the rules as to the operating and maintenance costs are going to be set by the sewer commissioners, presently the selectmen, and those are all changeable in the future. Keep that in mind. Having said all that, how do I feel about this? I am absolutely opposed to shifting any further costs to the general tax base. The town has already contributed a considerable number of dollars as well as a pretty valuable site on Adam Street to this project. Innumerable staff hours by top management, town manager, Doug Haley, the health director, and so on. I think the town as a whole has supported this project financially and in time to a much greater extent that the town has expended on solving anybody else's wastewater problems. And one of the many public health studies point out that wastewater problems enact and are pretty uniformly spread throughout the town. And I'm sure other people will address that issue tonight. So very simply, I am opposed to shifting any further costs to the general tax base. Now, since I may not be up speaking again, let me make a couple of other quick points. Somebody may point out that I was, if not the one, one of several people who suggested that a good way to present a possible allocation of the cost to the town is what is indeed being done tonight. In other words, listing the individual items as opposed to a percentage. And I plead guilty to that. My point, when I suggested it to the Sewer Action Committee many months ago, was that that would focus attention to what exactly is meant to the benefit of the town of the various costs. Now, you've seen them. Trey had the slide up. You know, archaeology, land acquisition, police payrolls, and so forth, police details. Number one, none of these costs would exist if the sewer project didn't exist. So to say that some of these are a benefit to the town, well, that's questionable because we would have never had the costs in the first place if it weren't for the sewer project. So to me, it's logical to attribute them to the sewer project. I will grant you that a couple of the small ones, particularly archaeology and the land acquisition, I wouldn't fight very hard. It's some $300,000. Because perhaps, for one thing, the archaeology needs to do that study was imposed on us from above, you know, by the state. It wasn't possible to predict that when the project was first estimated. And yeah, it is kind of all of our problem. But things like paving, we've heard, well, we haven't paved these streets in anticipation that the sewer may come in. True, but we paved other streets with the money. So now we have the Chapter 90 money to pay these streets. I mean, if we just simply shifted the schedule. So I don't see the logic of using that money to shift it to the general tax base. Same thing for the police details. They wouldn't exist if it weren't for the sewer project, and so on. I don't want to belabor it. Now, I want to say a couple of words about Steve Probst's presentation. Steve is very good, but this is the third presentation I've seen, and it's three different presentations. His first one was to show unquestionably that sewers are twice as expensive as septic systems. That's what he showed us a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month. Time goes fast. There are assumptions, and it would take way too long to go through them individually, but there are assumptions in Steve's presentation, which I would challenge. The benefits to the town, which he presents in his two bar graphs, are based primarily on something called avoided costs. In other words, somebody's opinion as what you don't have to spend because we have sewers. Well, that's highly questionable because nobody has really looked at all the properties in the sewer-proposed sewer district to evaluate what it would cost to fix them, except for those 40-some people that have actually had Title V inspections done. That's a very small percentage. To extrapolate from that, I don't agree with. Final word on the $5.5 million that we now hear, as John Prendeville pointed out as of last Saturday, or that's not true, as of a few days ago, we now hear that the school-- school onsite wastewater treatment facility would cost five and a half million. Amazing. For over a year, many people have been asking the school committee, the school administration, to give us a number. One of the members of the school committee was a member of the Sewer Action Committee. It's nothing new. Up till, literally, a few weeks ago, the number was absolutely positively 3 million. Dory Hunter, at a Board of Selectmen meeting, when they were putting these articles in place, and that's only a few short weeks ago, suggested that maybe it should be 4 million. He was told, no, Bill Ryan says it's 3 million. Suddenly, in the last few weeks, it grows to five and a half million. Nobody has had a chance to take a look at how it got to be five and a half million. The number seems totally out of line with the amount of flow that's being dealt with at the school campus, which is 30,000 to 40,000 gallons per day, and there are many installations in Acton built for less than a million dollars that deal with that kind of system. So, if the town bylaw, which I already mentioned would be changed, is to be applied and used to shift this five and a half million to the general tax base, it's going to take a lot more than this rather recent estimate to convince me that it's the right number. So once again, when it comes to how do we really allocate the cost, this town meeting is not going to be the final word on it. Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
I recognize the gentleman at the middle microphone.
Good evening, my name's David Garrett. I'd like to offer an amendment to Article I.
What is your amendment, sir?
The amendment is that the town will raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds the sum of 2.25 million dollars. These funds will be used over a period of 20 years to defray the usage charge being assessed each year against each residential user in the Middle Fork Conseil District.
Would you, that's written, I think, as I saw you reading it, would you bring it down front page so that we could see it? The issue is that amendments need to be within the scope of the article, scope of the motion. Thank you. And what we need to do is to make sure that this is. I'm going to ask for town council's opinion on this, and then I'll give you mine. (LAUGHTER) (INAUDIBLE) 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 Well, we're struggling with this amendment. I'm not going to accept this amendment as a part of Article I because it asks for an appropriation, and Article I does not deal with an appropriation. (LAUGHTER) I'm sorry, I'm going to turn this, I'm not going to accept this amendment because this amendment deals with an appropriation. There's no appropriation as part of Article I, and therefore it's out of the scope of Article I. The gentleman is now asking the town council if it might be appropriate as part of Article III, and we're deciding that. In the meantime, I have not asked the finance committee for their opinion on this article. I believe we have heard from the Board of Selectmen. So I am derelict, and I apologize. I would recognize the finance committee to speak to this article. Better than mine.
The finance committee is consistent with its position at the previous two decisions on sewerage, and is in favor of 100% use of funding. Saying another way, we would not agree as a committee with the transfer of funds from of 1.3 million to the general tax base. Number two, on the issue that's also in the article, that Trey put out rather succinctly, and we debated to understand that article, we do not agree with the changing of the vote, from a majority to a two-thirds vote. We think the town has been served well by using the majority vote, and there's no financial reason for making such a change. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I recognize the lady at the middle microphone.
Hi, my name's Gabrielle Watson. I live in the district, and I have some information that comes from the planning department about projected non-residential tax revenues. I'd like to put a slide up on the projector, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I was curious about the potential impact on the benefit side of sewers to the town of Acton as a whole. There's been a lot of talk about costs, but not a lot of quantification of the benefits. And part of the reason for that is that it's difficult to get a crystal ball out there and say, what's going to change if we get sewers? How much development can we expect? So, these numbers are presented with the caveat that nobody can predict how much development might happen in town. But what they talk about is one of the three potential development areas within the currently proposed sewer district that is suffering at present from a lack of development, in part because we don't have sewers and we can't get certain kinds of development like restaurants, pubs, photo labs, and other things that would attract a diversity of development and a dynamism that would bring in more business. And so the planning department shared some numbers, some projections that they've done on the Kelly's Corner business district area, based on the current zoning, which is FAR 0.40. And what that means is it has a floor area ratio of .4, or 40% of the developable area within the district can be built up. And so at full build-out, if everything was developed to its maximum potential as it's currently zoned, we would be looking at a revenue increase from the current revenues of just over 300,000 a year to 774,000 a year, or an increase on an annual basis of 463,000. And that, in my mind, dwarfs the conversation about 1.3 million on a one-time basis. This is an annual potential increase in tax revenues. At the current zoning, at a more aggressive zoning, at 60% of the buildable area, we'd be looking at nearly $800,000 a year. Now, again, this is a crystal ball, nobody's, nobody can predict what would happen, but I think they're interesting numbers for people to have in mind.
Thank you. I recognize the lady at the rear microphone.
Hi, I'm Frances Bozella-Gay, and I live on Vanderbilt Road, which is now in the expanded district. I have a question that I have some confusion about. Before I say that, though, I think that if this is going to be a municipal sewer district, then the municipality should be more than just another user of it. I think the municipality should pay a little bit more towards it. And Charlie, in regard to your argument that this wouldn't be exist if the project wasn't exist, it wouldn't, wasn't happening, I just have to say that the sewer project was voted on by the whole town, and the whole town imposed the cost onto the district. So that's another reason why I think that the town should come up with a little bit more. The question I had, and I'm confused, when I came to the sewer meeting, the informational meeting, last week, or was it this week, last week? It's been so many meetings. Another item you had on your list was for a million dollars for the pipe and plant expansion, which, because we are making bigger, we're going to use bigger pipes and interceptors so that other parts of town could, in the future, come in on it. What happened to that million? Where is that?
Mr. Schulke.
And why isn't it, why aren't you adding it to this?
The million is covered actually in another section of the bylaw, Section 4 of the bylaw. And it basically provides for future expansion costs, which are built into the plan right now, being paid by future users. Future users defined, there are two definitions of future users. The first definition is somebody outside of the current area, expanding that area to include them and hooking up. We have identified one business commercial that will hook up. Additionally, there are developable parcels within the current district that may subdivide, that, there are a number of things that could happen. Those would be future users, and assessed costs would go to them as well.
So that million is being taken out of the cost to the users now? Or, I guess I'm a little bit dense on this.
Yeah. For the interim, it comes out.
Okay. Thank you. As I said before, I'm in favor of this motion.
Before I take another speaker, can you hear this now? No. We have a question. Before I take another speaker, the governor, as you know, made employees to be in bed at 10 o'clock. And it's very fair that Mr. Gottlieb leave. He said he just couldn't take anymore of this town meeting. But we did promise that you would have a chance to ask him questions if you had any. So before he leaves, is there a question that you'd like to address to Mr. Gottlieb? All right, seeing no one standing, Mr. Gottlieb? Oh, we have a question. Come right down to a microphone, sir. While you're coming down, since Mr. Gottlieb isn't a town resident, I will ask you to vote on whether you want to hear from him. All in, I think you'll say yes. All in favor of hearing from Mr. Gottlieb, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say no, it's unanimous. I'll...
Hello? My name is Dan Buckley.
Right into the microphone, sir.
My name is Dan Buckley. I live on Indian Village Road. Mr. Gottlieb, I was one of the... Is not, up past today, what happens to the money? Since it's just appropriated now, that means we lose our chance, we have to get back in line with everybody else, with another 200-plus people?
I didn't get a vote. The question was, if the town does not vote to proceed with this, what happens with the money? We have a deadline of June 30th, 2000, for any community listed on the intended use plan, which is what was identified on the board earlier this evening, to act on their appropriation. So you're not fully funded for the project as it currently exists, my understanding. You need a subsequent appropriation tonight or some other time, prior to June 30th, in order to keep your place in line. Should the town fail to fully appropriate or authorize a borrowing for the full funding cost of the project by June 30th of next year, then the funding that appears on this year's list, the 14 and change, would be taken back, reallocated to the next community in line that was ready to proceed with their project. That would then raise the question about the 10 and a half million that we've been holding from the previous year, and we'd probably end up reallocating that also.
So it's use it or lose it time?
Effectively. I mean, the whole process predicated on, we'll make a commitment of funding to a community, predicated on them doing two things: appropriating by June 30th of the following year, whenever they get the award from us, and getting a loan application into it by October 15. Failure to meet either of those deadlines results in removal of the money and reallocation to other communities.
Thank you.
I'll now recognize the gentleman at the middle microphone.
Yeah, who do? Can we ask?
I recognize you after him, Mr. Lewis. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, John Donnelly, Mohegan Road. I've got a question probably for Mr. Hunter, I think. In the future, what is the selectmen and the sewer committees' plan for the rest of the town? I live in Indian Village, and I'm concerned about that. I've been here 30 years, and I'm beginning to wonder when ours are coming, if they ever do.
Mr. Hunter?
We had a question for Mr. Gottlieb. We didn't want him to leave, sir, I'm sorry.
You had a question for Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Getting close to that beauty sleep. You're still on, Mr. Gottlieb?
I don't think it'll take long.
Mr. Hunter, did you finish your answer to the question?
(LAUGHTER) I'll defer.
You'll defer? Don't do that to me again, please.
My name's Steve Lewis. I live on Carlton Drive. Mr. Gottlieb, I'm sure you'll agree that towns that sewer, a portion of the town, that the people in the town virtually always believe that this is beneficial to the town, that it's good for public health, and that it's good for economic development. And so my question for you is, am I right in understanding that virtually all of such sewer systems, the towns contribute, the entire town, receiving a benefit, generally contributes 50%, down to, say, 25%, or in that range, for the construction of the facility, rather than place the burden entirely on that section of town that is, that is sewed? Am I right in my understanding of this?
Our experience is that it's all over the map in terms of what types of projects we see, whether they include all of the town, a portion of the town. And frankly, how the town chooses to apportion the cost among its residents is something that we leave solely to that community to decide. We rank and evaluate projects based on their public health and water quality benefit, and the town's expressed ability and willingness to repay the loan. How that then is done... How that then is done within the community is relatively transparent to us. And so, you know, we accept and have seen the full range of alternatives implemented by various towns, and it is really a matter of totally local decision. So I don't, you know, as an agency allocating funding, frankly, we don't have a position on what the right way to allocate cost is among the users, and that's something we leave to the town.
I understand you wouldn't have a position on this. I was just wondering if you had any knowledge that this was generally the way in which it was done in most towns?
As I say, I've seen examples that look like this, and I've seen examples that look different than this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gottlieb. Thank you very much.
One more question?
One more question? Two more questions?
Two more questions. Michael Case, High Street, South Acton.
I haven't recognized you yet. Now.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Michael Case, High Street, South Acton. In your letter, you said there's about a billion dollars requested, I believe, for state funding. What are the chances of the federal government stepping in with grant money for sewer systems? This is a big problem. Is there, is there anything in the works in terms of grant money instead of loan money?
I'd say essentially, no. There's been, this program placed a grant program in the late 80s, and basically, you know, the loan program is the only show in town. There've been very few selected federal grants, primarily going to the MWRA, and even those have dwindled down in the last couple of years. We saw it this year. One of the reasons that our funding level on our draft was less than what we did with the final, was actually the president had proposed 40 percent national reduction in the grant money that goes to the states that forms a capital basis for which we do the loans. Congress restored that cut, but basically went back to a level funded. So rather than actually going towards grants, we're looking at an environment where there are active proposals to reduce the amount of federal money going into the SRF program or phase it out entirely. So I think this is what you see. The state offers the most heavily subsidized SRF program in the country. So this is as good a financing deal as the community can expect to get in our environment.
Thank you. My name is Matt Liebman, and I live in South Acton, outside of the district, by the way. I have a question regarding your previous comment, that you said that projects for SRF funding are evaluated based on their public health and water quality benefits. And since Acton moved up from 14 to 8, there must have been some evaluation of the public health and water quality benefits. I'm wondering if you could at least qualitatively describe for, for the audience how this project was evaluated in those terms, and if you can also perhaps weigh the benefits in public health by reducing the number of septic systems that are failing and improving the, probably the Fort Pond, excuse me, the Fort Pond River, Fort Pond Brook, of water quality in terms of phosphorus loading and bacterial loading, and weigh that against the potential increase in discharge of nutrients to the Assabette River?
Okay. Well, we basically look at a project to determine whether it has significant water quality and/or public health benefits. And a lot of the criteria that we use were put up on the board for you. Basically, what we're looking for from a project to determine whether it makes sense is to see whether, in fact, that project will, for water bodies, restore uses that are currently not available because of degradation from whatever the source of water pollution might be. For public health purposes, we look at whether there are sensitive populations, whether there are failing septic systems, which there obviously are here, whether there's threats of drinking water supplies, whether there's a reduction or elimination of overflows so that people, you know, aren't seeing septic overflow in their particular, in their basements or their streets. This project and all projects that we get are ranked in accordance with a point system. Now, there's no particular magic to the point system, other than it allows you to look at all projects on an equal footing and measure the benefits, the relative benefits of one versus the other. This particular project had fairly significant benefits, especially and largely driven by the difficulties that you see with septic systems complying with the new Title V requirements. And a lot of the benefits of, we understood the project originated there and came from there, and resulted in the, in the ranking that this particular project got. This project had, you know, as we mentioned, as was mentioned earlier, ranked in the top 10 two years ago when it was initially funded. Its rank dropped in the draft process relative to some other projects, which are not incredibly dissimilar to this one. We're seeing basically two types of projects being funded out of this year's funding list: those that are done to address Title V problems, and those that are done to address combined sewer overflows, wet weather flows into major river systems. And, you know, when we got some more information on the project, it got, it ranked back up essentially where it was, a little bit lower, but not in a meaningful sense, where we saw it two years ago. So we tend to view the project as having, you know, relatively consistent level of benefits. You know, I think there's a, you know, as was mentioned earlier, the septic systems give you, essentially primarily treated effluent. Takes out the solids, soil picks up some of the bacteria, doesn't do anything for nutrients. The treatment plant that you're going to get, while it does tend to consolidate wastewater into one particular area as opposed to have it diffusely spread out through the community, you are going to see much better removal of the solids, you're going to see reduction in the biological oxygen demand, and you're going to see, in this particular facility, advanced treatment for nutrient removal. So any way you cut it, wherever you put it, you know, the overall resource impacts are going to be better from this treatment plant and this discharge site properly operated and maintained than you're going to see from combination of septic system waste throughout. And, you know, the, you know, the trick and the problem with the septic systems is, you know, it's diffuse and it's underground, and nobody tends to see it because nobody wants to look for it. But there's no question that from a water resources point of view, probably from a drinking water protection point of view, you're going to be better off with advanced wastewater treatment properly done than your continuation of the septic system in this particular application, in this particular location.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gottlieb. And now, you can exit. Thank you very much. And now, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Hunter to continue answering his question.
The question was, what happens after this district? And the answer is, we have substantial plans in that regard. I would remind the meeting that in 1997, we voted a $60,000 appropriation supplemental site identification study, which we have not suspended pending to see whether this project would go forward, because it doesn't make any sense to spend money on a subsequent project to tie to this if you don't have the first one. And I'd also indicate that in the same IUP listing that we've been talking about tonight, the $14.2 million that Mr. Gottlieb was talking about, we're also in for $500,000 SRF loan for planning for a subsequent district toward West Acton Center and Indian Village. The thing that we're trying to do is to get started in the sewer business. To do that, you have to get to the table and become a player, get a plan, get a system going, and then look for additions. The area that we're talking about, as I indicated when I held up the microfiche, has been studied to death. But we are prepared to go forward, if this project succeeds, immediately on a study for subsequent areas. Now, how long will that take to come to fruition? I can't tell you. I've worked 14 years to get this one. But it is not our intent to stop. If this project succeeds, we have several alternatives using the infrastructure that will result from this project. And some of it would have to be upgraded, of course, but the alternatives are to infiltrate more water into this site, because this is a conservative limit the DEP has imposed upon us. We think it could be expanded, to go into the river, or, and, and/or, to go over to the water districts' wellfields, because we think that's coming in the regulations with this treated water. So yes, we have further plans.
Then let me follow up by asking you that, I seem to recall that in 1997, it was a date of 2004, and if I remember accurately, I believe you were the person who expressed it, that you would be breaking ground and they would exist. I'm just kind of curious, because I see this going on, but I get a feeling that the rest of us in the town are getting left out.
Well, I think it's going to take a while. I'm sorry, my ears are stuffed up, and I couldn't hear everything you said.
I mean, you've been waiting 14, but I've been waiting 33. And I'm getting a little impatient, I think.
Well, in truth, I'm not waiting, because in my lifetime, sewers will never get to me, but I hope to get them to some of the rest of you.
I wouldn't bet on it.
I recognize the gentleman at the side microphone.
Michael Biellas, Willow Street. In evaluating the cost to the people in the district, and one thing that I didn't hear mentioned, that I'm curious if anybody has any information on, is it's always been my understanding that if your house is sewed, that it's easier to sell it and that its value goes up. I don't know if this is an accurate piece of information, or how much the value might go up, and if anybody can speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Comment from Mr. Hunter?
I don't have statistical data in that regard, but before I entered into this career, I was a Coast Guard officer, and I moved every few years. And let's say I paid more for houses that had sewer than had septic systems.
No laughing.
Sorry.
The lady at the middle microphone.
I'm Margaret Miley from Maple Street. I'm in the district, recently sold a house in the district, and that was one of the first questions people asked. So I had a sense that it had a bearing on the market value of the house, though I couldn't quantify it. Two points related to public benefit. One is simply momentum. We're getting this started. We need help getting this started. Septic systems are archaic, they're increasingly ineffective. Contractors who put in septic systems in our area are refusing to give the 15- and 20-year guarantees anymore, because they know that their time is up soon. So the Title V regulations are getting more rigorous. This is going to affect the entire town, and we need to look at it that way. Secondly, there's a lot of discussion about public health, but not really about the environment. We're polluting the earth here. Anyone who goes out for a walk in South Acton on a quiet evening can smell it. It's time that we stop polluting the Assabette River. The other public benefit that, I'm glad the man from the state is gone, that we really need to pay attention to, although it's nice to talk about future economic development in Kelly's Corner, the other issue is preventing economic contraction. The shopping centers, Roach Brothers, CVS, the liquor store, video store, Kmart, the bowling alley, all of those places are pumping daily or every other day. How long are they going to do that? If we vote this down tonight, will they take a look at their, their business expenses and say, this isn't worth it? This is the economic center of Acton, and we need to prevent contraction there. Please think about this, if you use Roach Brothers, or CVS, or any of these other places, and that is town-wide, and we need your help. Thank you.
I recognize the lady at the far side microphone.
I'm Sue Stone. I live on Silver Hill Road, which is in the district. I have two questions. One is tiny, and one is a little bit more general. We're talking about Article 1, and just tell me if I'm understanding this correctly. This is not an article about how much money would be pulled out of the 25-point-whatever million, but it's an article to allow, amend the bylaws of the town to allow money to be pulled out at some subsequent meeting by a 2/3 vote. Is, am I reading that correctly? Because that's what my warrant thing says.
It allows a reallocation of money.
It allows that to happen, but I assume some approval needs to happen for the specific amount of money at some other time.
I'm sorry, would you say that again, please?
Does, are we approving that amount of money tonight? Or are we, is that going to happen at some other time? Say, for example, the April Town Meeting?
Mr. Frederick, or Mr. Hunter? Oh, Mr. Schubert. It's like a double play.
Yes, and yes. Tonight, we are voting to allocate an additional 1.3 million in what we've identified as public benefits. That's 1.3 million plus. We are proposing to change future town meeting to require a 2/3 vote on any changes to this bylaw.
Okay, but my warrant article doesn't say 1.3 million. You make that specific tonight. Okay. And to Mr. Cadillac's point about against including things like paving the streets and police details, I would like to remind us all that High Street, which has got a new stoplight, which is working today, thank you, town, Parker Street, School Street, River Street, Route 27 around the Railroad Bridge and Exchange, those are streets that we all use to get from Boston to our houses in Avoiding Route 2, or other people use to get through the town of Acton. There are benefits to everybody from properly managing the traffic flow through, through those areas during construction. They're not my street. It's those other streets. Thank you.
I recognize the lady at the side microphone.
Lauren Rosenzweig, Marshall Path. I moved to the previous question. Did I say that right?
I'll tell you what, this gentleman here has been waiting patiently to propose an amendment, and I believe we finally have one that's structured appropriately. So if you would defer, I would like to take the amendment. It would be fair to him.
I defer.
I'll recognize the gentleman for his amendment.
Dave Garrett, Meeting House Road. I'd like to propose an amendment.
Now, would you speak close to the microphone, please?
Dave Garrett, Meeting House Road. I'd like to propose an amendment to Article 1.
Go ahead.
And the, it's, it's the piece that's related to user costs and add to the bylaw except for $162,500 of annual operating costs that shall be allocated to the taxpayers at large.
Where specifically is that going to go?
After the bit that says that all the user, all the user operating costs go to the district users, go to the members of the district.
We'll accept the motion. Do I hear a second? All right, the amendment, there's an amendment in front of us now.
I have a very short presentation to make in support of that amendment, about six minutes, I should think. Is that okay?
Sure. If it's no more than six minutes. Does this come with view graphs and... You're eating up the six minutes quickly.
What this does is it allocates some of the usage costs that are borne by residents in the district to the town at large. You saw in Steve Probst's... You saw in Steve Probst's presentation that the major reason that the sewers are exceedingly expensive for the residents of the district is because of the operating costs. I'd like to commend the town on the work that they've done around the capital cost in fairly allocating them. The capital costs are now really fairly allocated based on the benefits, as the Article 1 stands at the moment. The problem is that the costs for the usage make the cost of sewers for the people in the district extraordinarily expensive compared to septic systems. Septic systems are $100 a year. The usage charges for the sewers is about $600 a year. In order to bring the costs into line with the benefits, there needs to be some way of allocating some of those costs to the town. And as pointed out, if it's less than $10 million, it's still a good deal for the town. I'm for sewers for the town because it's good for the town as a whole. Now, what I'm proposing is that the town contribute, basically $162,500 per year, that the town will basically contribute to the sewer district to offset these costs to the residential owners in the sewer district. There's some things that need to be done so that it doesn't benefit the commercial things, but I believe that may be able to be done through some form of different rates or something. I'm not quite sure about that. Anyway, I want to move these costs. I've got a financial analysis here, which is probably not worth going through because I'll run out of my six minutes. But the key is basically to get a net present value of about $3.25 million moved away from the users in the sewer district. In order to do that, you have to move about $162,500 per year. I'm gonna not go through the analysis. What I would jump right down to is, hey, what's that gonna cost the general taxpayer to move $162,000 a year? Basically, very, very little. It comes out to $18.95 before you deduct your taxes. Sorry, it comes out to $26 before deduction of taxes. After deduction of taxes, it's basically gonna cost each person only $18 a year. Now, that's not much, but let's look what that does to the costs of the people in the district who are getting sewers. The problem is that, as it stands at the moment, the district owners are basically paying a lot of the costs and a lot of benefits are going to the town or to the town as a whole. Let's see what it saves the district owner. It saves each district owner about $337 a year. What that does is brings the $600 cost down to about $200 and something, which although is a lot more expensive than $100 a year for septic, is a reasonable additional amount to pay, and it really does equalize the costs and the benefits. In conclusion, I'd ask that everybody support this amendment so that cost splitting is fair. It's good for the district and it's good for the town as a whole. In addition, people in the district would like to be able to vote for sewers in Article 3. I'm in favor of sewers for the town, but it's unfair to burden just a small portion of the town with the cost. Therefore, by voting for this amendment, you'll be equalizing the costs and it will make everybody feel good about voting for Article 3. And in addition, basically, Article 3 needing a two-thirds majority to pass. If there's a lot of district owners that feel that the financial aspects of this are very unfair, then maybe they won't support Article 3, and then everybody loses. As we've seen, the schools are gonna cost $5.5 million to sewer. So, I seriously ask that you support this article so that everybody is happy. And thank you for your time.
Is there anybody who wishes to comment on the amendment?
Yes, Sarah.
I'm gonna ask for Mr. Schubert first, and then you, ma'am.
A couple of comments about the amendment. First, the selectmen who are in session took a vote, and it was unanimous not to support this amendment to the article. Let me explain why. First and foremost, this is the first opportunity that we have had to look at these numbers and to verify them, and we just don't have an opportunity to look at this. Second, we have, on the Sewer Action Committee, taken a position that we only want to amend, to propose the changes to the article as listed, which is the 1.3 million in quantifiable public costs. If we had an opportunity to select something else, we would've. We have reviewed all of our funding opportunities, and we believe on the Sewer Action Committee that this is the best representation of actual costs for the community. Please, I urge you to oppose this amendment. Thank you.
And I'm gonna ask for the Finance Committee's point as well. Finance Committee, Mr. Prendeville.
The Finance Committee has caucused, after hearing this amendment for the first time, in consistent with our position of 100% user funding for the capital pieces, we would definitely oppose and recommend against this particular provision. This would be the first time, I know, that we're going to take administrative, operating and maintenance charges and say because they're gonna cost more, we'll pass them off to some other member of the community. I think that would be, if not unfair, it's certainly not an economic choice. By the way, right now, the amounts of money, assuming the 5.5 million for the schools' avoided cost, has the town contributing over 22% of the total bediment costs. Thank you.
And now the lady at the middle microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sarah Cope, Old Beaverbrook. I would like to speak against this amendment as one of the acknowledged 9% of the town that already has a private sewage treatment facility. I currently bear costs very similar to those being proposed at this town meeting for the users of this district by myself, in my own, for my piece of that. I have no opportunity to request the town share a piece of my user fees for sewage treatment cost, and I feel that that's something that I do as a user of that system. Therefore, I think it's only fair that the users of this system pay for their operating and maintenance costs as well. Thank you.
Are there other comments on this amendment? On the amendment?
No.
Well, if someone wanted to do that, they could, but only this lady, because she would be next. I'm gonna recognize this lady if she wishes to speak. If not, I will recognize next, Mr. Probst.
First of all, I forgot to identify myself as Lauren Rosenzweig, 26th Marshall Path. I am a member of the Planning Board, but I am up here as a private citizen, and I moved to the previous question. Am I allowed to do that again?
Okay, that's fine. You moved the previous question on the amendment?
Moved the amendment.
On the amendment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of cutting off debate on the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay.
Nay.
The amendment is defeated, and we're back. Let me take that again. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the amendment, say no.
No.
Amendment is lost. No. If seven people wanna count, we'll count, but it wasn't close. This only has to be a majority. This doesn't have to be a two-thirds majority. Are the seven people who wanna count it? I don't hear them standing or see them standing. I'll recognize Ms. Whaley.
I would like to move the previous question, Article 1.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay.
Nay.
Debate is cut off. Who did that in front? Now, that was highly unfair. You've been very fair tonight speaking in front of a microphone, made that sound like at least five or six people. But nice try. We will now vote on Article 1. It takes a majority vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article 1, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 1 has been carried. Article 2. Mr. Schubert moves to rescind the appropriations and borrowing authorizations described in this article. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Schubert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 2 is simply a housekeeping cleanup article. On April 11, 1988, this town meeting voted to appropriate 290,000 and 3.1 million for the construction of sewers in a consolidated, very core South Acton and Kelly's Corner district. What this article merely does is it rescinds those votes and sets it up legislatively to move forward with Article 3 without confusion. That's it.
From the Finance Committee, a comment, please?
The Finance Committee approves the rescinding of the obsolete borrowing authorization.
Any comments from the town meeting members? Seeing nobody standing, we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion is carried.
I'd like to make a motion.
Who would like to make, who said that?
I did.
But what is the purpose of your motion? Don't say the motion, but what is the purpose of the motion?
I wanna combine some motions and make a motion to, on how to vote on it.
Wearing that shirt.
Yes. Thirty years Woodstock reunion.
You know, if this is complicated, you're gonna become the fastest X-Head teller.
It's very simple.
Go ahead, tell me what you'd like to do.
I'd like to move that we vote Article 3 for 6 through 16 as unanimous consent of the vote of all the parties. Get it over with, and let's go home.
I'm seriously not going to accept that motion. You didn't even ask me why. It was the shirt. I'm gonna read the motion under Article 3. I like your sentiment, though, but... The motion is long and complex. I will read it, I'll try to break it down into parts so that it makes some sense to you. Mr. Schubert moves that 3,633,050 is appropriated in addition to the 11,500,000 appropriated under Article 18 of the warrant for the 1997 annual town meeting, and the $10 million appropriated under Article 3 of the warrant for the October 5, 1998 special town meeting for the purpose of financing the construction of sewers and a wastewater treatment facility for the Middle Fort Pond Brook Sewer District, including without limitation, all costs thereof is defined in Section 1, Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws, that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow 3,633,050 and issue bonds or notes therefore, under Chapter 44 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws, that the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the project or the financing thereof, and that the town manager is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. It was much simpler, Dr. Zimmerman, going to Conant School and reading to the third grader today than reading that. Mr. Schubert.
Fellow citizens, this is it. Dory Hunter, Nancy Tavernier, the Sewer Action Committee, everybody who's worked on sewers has gotten to this point. It's a go or no-go decision. What Article 3 does, if you vote yes, we will proceed with the Middle Fort Pond Sewer If you vote no, and the vote carries, I personally will go back to the drawing board because I will not give up on sewers. It is the right thing for this town, it is the right thing for us as citizens and as Why should you vote go? There are public health benefits. We admit that some of them can't be quantified, but some of them can. We are protecting our groundwater. There is the potential for increased economic development in South Acton. Now, notice I haven't talked about Kelly's Corner because there is some development in Kelly's Corner. South Acton, the town of Acton, municipal government owns two vacant parcels in the core South Acton district. Four years ago, this town voted to approve a South Acton Village Plan. There were two things that we needed to revitalize South Acton. One of them was the Norman Lake Bridge. The other one was sewers. From a purely economic standpoint, with the latest numbers given from the schools, voting yes is a less costly provision... voting yes is a less costly provision for this community than voting no. Another way to look at it, as Wayne Frederick said earlier in our board discussion in recommending this, is that if you vote no for this, the town will spend roughly $5.5 million to build a sewage treatment plant at the schools. The town will also spend an additional $2.4 million, which has already been expended, for design costs, for peer reviews, for some of those costs that I've talked about in Article One. That's a given. For an additional 17, roughly 17 million, we have a sewer system. If you vote no, we will spend roughly $8 million to sewer schools. I have only been a selectman for about six months now. I know that through all the discussions, through all the engineering studies that we've done, the proposed construction projects, and the debate, that one thing remains constant. Every time this town delays on voting for sewers, two things, undeniable facts, happen. Number one, the cost goes up, and number two, the available state funding goes away. In 1966, this community passed over, excuse me, passed over an article that proposed a sewer project. The total cost to sewer about 90% of the community in 1966 was $9.6 million. 100% of that was funded through a federal grant. We are now sitting here, 30 years later, with a $25 million project, and borrowing money at zero interest to do this. I truly believe that this is our last, best hope, to get a meaningful project, to clean up the mess, and to move forward into the 21st century. I urge all of you to vote yes on this article. Thank you.
I'd like to hear now from the Finance Committee, please. Mr. Johnston?
Mr. Johnston is going to present an amendment which the Finance Committee proposes to this article. Mr. Johnston?
Sidney Johnston, 51 Quabag Road. Sidney Johnston, 51 Quabag Road. I move to amend the motion for Article Three as follows. All authorizations under this article are contingent upon the following condition: That monies borrowed under the authorization of this article, including any state revolving fund, SRF loans, will be repaid with a payback time period not to exceed 20 years, exclusive of any term of any bond anticipation notes or interim loan borrowings.
Mr. Johnston, could we see that amendment, please? Mr. Prendeville? You seconded it? Okay. Mr. Johnston, to your amendment, please.
This, the slide is the slide that John Prendeville prepared and presented a few minutes ago, but we want to take a second look at it. We note that with 20-year borrowing, the payback is about 89 cents on a dollar, whereas with 30-year borrowing, the payback is greater than the borrowing. And so it's cheaper to borrow on the 20-year payback time period. And the Finance Committee voted to ask me to make this amendment because it's the cheaper method of borrowing. Now, let me point out, to be fair, the trade-off is given in this box here. The trade-off is that under a 20-year borrowing, the payback per year is $613 per homeowner, approximately, and under 30-year borrowing, it's $458, for a difference of $155 a year. So the yearly cost per homeowner is greater with a shorter time period, but the total cost is less, and the Finance Committee voted for the cheaper total cost. Thank you.
Will you hear a comment from the selectmen on the amendment? Mr. Shupert?
The selectmen have discussed this in great depth, as have the members of the Sewer Action Committee. The Sewer Action Committee has recommended 30-year financing, and there's one reason for that. All of you, chances are, most of you, when you purchased your first home, think back to that first purchase, you probably went for 30-year financing. Why? I know why I did it. The only way I could afford it was to spread the payments out over 30 years. Now, the Finance Committee is absolutely 100% correct. You will spend less money, bottom line, with 20-year financing. We are attempting to keep the cost, the annual betterment fee, as low as possible, and that is why the Board of Selectmen opposed this article, this amendment to the article. In opposing this, we are supporting 30 years. You, the voters, have a choice on this, and you can send us a very clear message. And to tell you the truth, personally, and I'm not going to speak for any other members of the board, if you want 20 years, if you think that makes sense as a district user or as a town resident, and there's an advantage, because you're paying less total money, you'll vote for this article, and we will go out and get 20-year financing. If you are against this article, you're basically voting for lower payments over 30 years, keeping your payments as low as possible and as flexible as possible, and we, as the selectmen, will authorize the town treasurer to go out and borrow at 30 years. It's as simple as that. If you vote yes for the amendment, we will go ahead, and we'll do the 20-year financing. If you vote no, you're telling us you support 30-year funding. It's as simple as that.
Ms. Whaley.
I oppose the amendment. The people in the district have on their shoulders a 100% user cost at this point, which we are sharing with the town, admittedly. However, I recognize, as a lot of us feel here, that we are the ones that are sticking out our necks, as we have right along, as we've asked for this solution to our problems. And we're saying, yes, give us the go-ahead. We will bear the expense to get this town into the 20th century, let alone the 21st. Okay? We voted Article Number One and said yes to that. I disagree with the amendment because I feel as if any savings the town is going to get is not worth the extra $155 a year. I know it doesn't sound like that much outside the district, but added on to the $400-some-odd dollars, it is a lot. And if you have to pump your septic system twice a year or more, which you probably do in South Acton, it's roughly the same. So I urge that we defeat this amendment and get on with the main article. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the middle.
Dave Garrett, Meeting House Road. I'm going to be speaking in favor of the article as a whole, but I most emphatically want to speak against this amendment. First of all, I disagree with the Finance Committee when they say that it's cheaper over 30 years. If you bring that money back to current cost, it's actually equal, so over the period of time, it's not going to cost any more. But the most important thing, as just said here, is that to us in the district, it makes an enormous difference. Basically, it cuts the capital cost to us per year by nearly a third, so it's not going to cost anybody else anymore. It's going to, it's going to save us in the districts some money, and therefore, I urge that you defeat this amendment.
Mr. Probst.
I am also speaking against the amendment. Basic logic is, you're, when you borrow money, how long you borrow it for relates to the life of the asset. You borrow 30 years on a house, because a house lasts a long time. 30 years, that reason for sewer makes sense. When you do the math, as David indicated, the numbers work out about the same in the net present value. What matters, though, is who's paying the money, because that's different. Of a 30-year loan, if you live outside the district, I would submit, most of us aren't going to be in the same homes 30 years from now. That means a piece of the value is going to be, piece of that cost will be paid by future owners who are getting future benefits. That seems fair. If you live in the district, you're going to end up paying off that whole betterment, because what happens is, when you move, the next person to move in, the mortgage company will not finance the betterment. They have to clear all liens, which means that you pay it off when you relocate. It makes sense to have a low payment, when you don't have a lot of cash in hand, during the, during the normal period of living in the home. When you pay it off, yes, you'll pay more at the end of, if it's only financed for 30 years, you'll pay it off less. You'll have cash in hand, you're selling your home. So in that sense, it's fairer for the people who live outside the district, and it's a better match of cash flow availability for people who live in the district if we make it a 30-year loan.
Gentlemen at the side.
Richard Fallon, Parkdale Hill Road. I am in the district. I just have a question and then a comment. The first question, the question is, my understanding is, this is essentially a 0% loan with that extra 10 years, and whoever can answer that. Isn't this really essentially at 0% interest?
I think John Prendeville should take that.
Go ahead.
The slide we, that Sid Johnston put up, indicated the difference in the total cost that would be paid over 20 years or over 30 years, and it shows a differential of $3 million. The present worth argument goes to whatever you get for a discount rate. Now, I'll grant that the present worth numbers are equal to each other for 20 over 30, but you also have to assume that if you stay in that house for 30 years, you have the advantage in the last 10 years of making no payments, and I trust that one into the present worth analysis that was done. So I don't, I think that with the sewers going in at $25 million, from the financial point of view, one would be well advised to say, okay, for the benefit of the town as well as for the district, take a negative interest loan. It's not zero, it's negative by about 11%.